Welcome to everyone out there. I will call the meeting to order and we'll start the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of their God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'm Megan Holt, please.
Trustee Dom.
Here.
Trustee Campbell. I'm sorry. Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Prince?
Here.
Trustee Dayton?
Here.
Trustee Thomas? Here. Trustee Honey?
Present. Six trustees present. Okay, with that, I could use, uh, trustee Cook is not here, so I could use somebody to make the motion for a remote person to participate.
I'll make that consideration of a motion to allow trustees to attend remotely through electronic participation as per administration policy. Number two, I O four O dot O two.
Thank you. More so. Go ahead.
The basis for missing the meeting is for health, work, emergency.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Again, I will call.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas? Yes. Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Present. Six present, one remote, six, four. I was looking at.
One president in five years.
I was, I was looking at.
The treasurer requested, uh, vice president Cook didn't vote for himself because he can't vote, he's not present.
Right, right. We have, we've done that.
Yes.
Many times, actually. Alright, so we have a written resolution accepting resignation of trusted Campbell.
It was presented out to you on Friday in your packet. Do you want to?
Do we have to read word for word? Or if not, then, uh...
I can provide that for you if you want to read that.
Alright, well, I will, I'll make the motions since I have it here. Whereas treasurer Carolyn Campbell has been appointed to the county board of, county board chairman by county board chairman Michael J. Bueller. Filled his seat vacated District Two to an effective date of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the Board of Trustees, the McHenry County Conservation District accepts trustee Campbell's resignation to take on this new role within McHenry County. Whereas the Illinois Conservation District Act at seventy ILCS four-ten requires the Board of Trustees to declare vacancy when a trustee resigns his or her office and that that vacancy shall be filled by the county board within sixty days thereafter. Whereas trustee Campbell's term was scheduled to end on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And this date is greater than sixty days from the effective date of the resignation. And whereas the county board chairman is already in the process of appointing a replacement for this position for a full term. And whereas the Board of Trustees desires to comply with the requirements of the Conservation District Act, uh, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees and the Henry County Conservation District as follows. Section one, the above stated recitals are incorporated herein by this reference. Section two, the Board proceeds hereby declares a vacancy in the office of trustee by virtue of trustee Carolyn Campbell's resignation. The vacancy shall be effective as of February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, in accordance with seventy ILCS four-ten slash five E. A copy of this resolution shall be sent to the chairman of the McHenry County Board to apprise him of the existence of the vacancy so that it may be filled as scheduled effective April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, dated this twenty-second day of February two thousand twenty-two. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Yes, yes, trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries. Need to nominate a new treasurer. Motion.
I will make that motion to nominate Pratt Prince.
Is there a second? Chris has a second. Are there any further nominations? I have to say this three times. Are there any further nominations? One more time, are there any further nominations? Seeing none, do I get a motion then to declare unanimous ballot by the secretary? Does the motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Phil has the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ray has the second. All in favor of that motion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Thomas? Yes. Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries. The secretary will cast the unanimous ballot and, uh, congratulations.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, that, well, uh, somebody could read the conservation ethic. Uh, goal number six, anybody? Chris, thank you.
Goal number six, foster the conservation ethic among the ten towns citizens. Helping all of us, just the basis for nature to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume and moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. The conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number one is to preserve native plants and animals, geological features, and natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered depending on, to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded in the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
Good, thank you. And reading of the conservation stewardship pledge, Ray was prepared. I go ahead, Pat.
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for water, wildlife, and way of life in Henry County. Quality of life in the Henry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate.
Thank you. I don't know, there is number nine.
We will provide outdoor places to reflect, play, and interact with family, friends, and community.
Okay. Then we have a motion of adopt the agenda. And there's a motion to adopt the agenda as presented as a second. Also, second by Chris. Roll call.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas? Yes. Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. Agenda has been adopted. That we have special recognition or introduction of a new team member, Susan Traver, uh, county assistant. Elizabeth, are you making that, or?
I am going to turn it over. I see that we both have our director of finance and administration, Andy Dialak, and Jean Gerstrang, who is our accounting supervisor on. I'll leave it to you, to, to introduce Susan.
Well, I'm going to turn it over to Jean Gerstrang, our accounting supervisor. She did a great job this morning introducing her to all staff. So Jean, if you've got your mic on.
Sure. I would be happy to introduce our new accounting assistant. As you know, we had a long road in getting this position filled. And one thought that came to my mind on this was the saying, good things come to those who wait. And this actually played out very nicely for us. Um, it seemed like we were never going to get the position filled. And we received in November an application from Susan Traver, and it was almost too good to be true. She had a lot of great experience that fit nicely with what we were looking for. Um, and as I said this morning, we have pretty high standards of what we're looking for. So I was excited to have her come in and interview. She has like fourteen years of experience in accounting and payroll and purchasing, a lot of great skills that we needed. So we brought her in for an interview and it went really well. Was very excited and passionate about the Conservation District. She has a son who's older now, but she took advantage in a lot of the MCCD programs with her when he was younger. And her enthusiasm really came through. We invited her back for a second interview. And since we want to make sure our candidates have the skills, we actually give her, give them on the second interview a skills test. And she passed with flying colors, one of the few who went through everything and got everything accurate and correct. So we are very pleased to offer her the job. Um, and we are extremely ecstatic that she accepted the position. She started about thirty days ago and she totally hit the ground running. She's very eager to learn, open-minded, willing to jump in and help out wherever. So I'm very thrilled that she is a great addition to our program, um, our department, and that she's going to do great things for us. I have a lot of confidence in her. So welcome, Susan Traver. Um, she's on if she wants to say anything, but really glad to have her.
Thank you. Uh, Susan, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you. I'm thrilled to be here. And, um, this is almost like a dream job for me because I always love the Conservation District programs and everything so much. So when I saw that ad, that ad come up for this position, I jumped right on it. So I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Welcome and thank you. Uh, we certainly appreciate it. It comes in and helps. And that's, that's great. So hope you enjoy your years here. Okay, with that, we're moving on to organizational excellence showcase. Uh, and I believe John Kramer is on tonight.
Yes, uh, thank you. Elizabeth, did you want to say anything in a lead-in or not?
I, just to say, um, each of the divisions have been presenting the excellent work that they do. And this will represent the last presentation of our group. Um, and so, John, I think, I think that we've been flexible, uh, in, in everyone doing a great job. And we're looking forward to your presentation this evening.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, trustees, for allowing us to spend a few minutes, uh, talking about what it is that we do. Uh, you see some of us from time to time, uh, make presentations and this is going to, you know, but typically those are just, you know, one subject at a time. Uh, and hopefully today we'll be able to kind of, uh, share with you, uh, multiple things that we do. I want to direct your attention to those four words at the bottom of this, uh, particular slide, the image there. The words are design, build, maintain, and protect. Those four words are, couldn't describe better. You couldn't find four words to describe better what it is that operations planning and public safety does. That really encapsulates, uh, us in a nutshell. Uh, and in a few minutes, I'll be turning it over to the managers to do, to go through. And they're going to share with you how our Conservation District sites, uh, how we design them, how we build them, uh, and how they're maintained and, uh, what we do to protect them. Uh, the, the managers will be covering that. Uh, in this image, uh, the bottom half of it, you notice that on the left side, uh, is, is pavement. It could be a trail. It might be a roadway. Uh, and on the right side is a shoulder and you can see some, you know, maintained turf. Uh, and in the background and, and, and kind of obscured there, uh, are, for lack of a better word, the wildlands, uh, which most people who come to Conservation Districts seek to get to. And they, they, they like to get away from the hustle and bustle and they like to come to nature to do that, or many of them do. But people seek comfort. Uh, they, they want to escape, but they want, uh, they, they want safety or they want to feel safe or not be in danger when they're doing it. You know, they're looking for level surfaces. Uh, they're looking for, you know, nicely maintained areas. Uh, they're looking for clean restrooms. Um, you know, the creature comforts out there, a bench without trash on it. These are the things that augment their experience and give them that sense of security. And occasionally see a police officer drive by or see families running around knowing that it must be a safe place if families are there. So that, that is really what we do. We provide this. We are the kind of segue between the, the users uh, and, and the destination they're getting to, the wildlands that, uh, many times are restored by our, our land preservation and natural resources, folks. We, in talking with the managers, we decided not to go number heavy with this. We bombard you folks with numbers, uh, lots of reports and lots of numbers. And sometimes those numbers of the scope of what we do can get buried. So we did decide to add in one set of numbers. Could I have the next slide, please? Thank you. On the left side there, you remember the words, uh, design, build, maintain, and protect. On the left side there, we, we do that for every one of those things, the, the thirty-five sites, the forty-five miles of biking trail, six campgrounds, uh, you know, the horse trails, um, and the picnic sites. We do that on all of them. And the, you know, the three individuals that are largely charged with accomplishing that, um, you know, three sides of a triangle, uh, they work together to do that. On one side is the Planning and Development Department, and that's managed by Amy Peters. Uh, and in the other side or another side of that is, uh, Perry Weeborg, and he manages the operations, the maintenance side of things. Uh, and then, uh, Laura is, Laura, Laura King is our police chief and she's the, these protector, the ultimate protector of these kinds of things. So in one more set of numbers, between the three of them, they have over sixty years of experience with the Conservation District. Collected, that's, that's a lot of years. And in terms of leadership roles at the district, uh, I believe it's over forty, forty years that they have been in some sort of leadership role. If you add in, uh, Laura's previous leadership experience with other police departments, uh, they're, they're pushing that number up to fifty. Um, so it's, it's quite an extensive, um, amount of experience that that group does have. Uh, now with that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Amy. And Amy's going to talk a little bit about the design, uh, build side of things, uh, before she turns it on to Perry. And then Perry will talk about maintenance and then, uh, we'll turn it over to Laura, uh, and then she'll finish back up with me. So, Amy?
Well, thank you. Can everybody hear me all right before I get too far along? Uh, so you are looking at, uh, twenty-four, uh, twenty-four years and nineteen years. And it's just the two of us and, um, we're thrilled to be here. So let's get into it. If you would switch to the next slide. The role of the Planning and Development Department is to take an idea and a vision and turn it into reality. A place where people connect, learn, and grow. And how do we do that? It starts with a problem solving and management process. We believe in the premise that people will make and implement sound decisions if they understand their resources, the problems, and opportunities, and the effects of those decisions. We take great effort into analyzing and integrating complex issues, uh, economic, social, ecological considerations. There's layers of, of science on the land, the soils, the topography, the hydrologies, um, the site use, um, previous site use, the access key features, whether it has a cane, whether it has a oak grove. The historical and cultural significance, um, is always considered. The maintenance, the limitations, the land management that we hope to, um, see on this. Um, opportunities, safety, security issues, and obviously the community needs. The planning process considers people, their connection to the land, to the place, the connection with other people, and bringing all people together to share their voice and to hear their story. So the planning process provides a collective focus. It's a guidance or a desired future condition, um, that provides identifiable and definable measurable terms to take an idea and make it into a reality. Really requires a very unique skill set. So facilitating, um, this type of process, um, is to encourage and develop support. It's to minimize conflict by emphasizing the value of experience. So we are an artist, a landscape architect, an ecologist, an architect, an engineer, a planner, sometimes newly a grant writer, and much more. We stand at the intersection of all of these professions and understanding the massive responsibility and that range of leaving that lasting impression on future generations. While at the same time, we have to zero in and focus on the details of a quarter of an inch. Next slide, please. So green infrastructure is a great, um, example of innovation, of that balance, of that macro scale, that green vision, down to the inches of making a site, um, accessible or universally, um, used. So as professions who understand the process of nature, such as water, for instance, our creativity and knowledge allow us to design and build infrastructure that brings people closer to nature without negatively impacting it and sometimes even improving it. We have been leaders in advocating and providing solutions to help reduce the impacts of development in multiple ways throughout the district. That's conservation areas. So we've used native landscaping from the very beginning, uh, rain gardens, permeable pavements. And we've got filter strips. We have runnels. We have all sorts of, um, tech techniques that we've been able to put into place. They're from Bogor Bog to Dewfield. We've done, um, sustainable boardwalks that haven't had any impact. We have, um, permeable concrete. We have, uh, Ka Had, Hum, Prospect, Lake in the Hills, Pleasant Valley. We reused buildings, um, and repurposed them. Staying current with standards and best practices in, in all of that green infrastructure technology is critical for a small team to have a greater and much more meaningful impact. Next slide, please. To bring it all together, right? Why do we do it? And, and, um, our continued success depends on, uh, building these inclusive environments. And, and the magic really happens, I think, with, um, the construction side of things. So the construction, um, implementation phase, it, it takes great, great patience. And to quote my son, um, his definition of patience is "a minor form of despair disguised as a virtue." So why? Why does it cost so much? Why does it take so long? Why does it, why does the quality matter? Why do we have to follow codes? Why do we have regulations? Why do we need a permit? Because that makes then maintaining and making it safe, um, easier for the next two. But to, to be fair, it's, it's, it's because creating these places that make everybody feel welcome is, it just takes that much work. So the list part of my presentation of what we are involved with is, we, you know, we, we oversee, um, creating the documents, the plans, the demo plans, the utility plans. Um, we do the planting plans. We do the signage. We do the specifications, you know, all of those things that one of my greatest professors said, "Those types of things should be invisible." And I hope that at the end, um, maybe that's, that's the goal, is to make some of that seem invisible, that it's necessary. So we are responsible for the construction management, um, whether it's a full site, whether it's a building. We do the contracts, the RFPs, the RFQs, the schedules, the budgets, the coordination of all of the other disciplines. Um, we do obtain the permits. We do the cost estimates. And we do the bidding, administration, um, and we oversee all of the construction. So the, the last thing that we do is maintain, is the maintenance. We set that standard. And, um, and then we oversee that for the first year, hopefully, before we can get the kinks out of it, before we have to, um, hand, hand it over to our maintenance, um, and our operations. So Perry, take it away. We can't hear you.
Is that better? Alright, hopefully everyone can hear me just fine. Uh, so yes, the operations department. If, uh, everyone recalls this past fall, uh, we did a restructure. And when it was all said and done, the operations department then became three branches. Parks Maintenance, Building Maintenance, and Fleet Management. Next slide, please. So what we have here, what you're looking at right now is the Felpro Triple R West Entrance. That's a large, uh, slide photo. And then within that is the Boone Creek Shelter. So this is part of what Parks Maintenance, um, is responsible for. And within that branch, there's one supervisor, twelve rangers that are responsible to maintain the thirty-five sites throughout, um, McHenry County. Within that, I'm getting a little feedback. Sorry about that. Um, we have infrastructure amenities, landscaping that we maintain. I'm still getting a little echo. Bear with me. Uh, we'll start with infrastructure. Um, so we'll start with, uh, what you're seeing here again in the photo at the Triple R West Entrance. What, what we see for Parks Maintenance, um, is the maintenance of that infrastructure and the landscaping and those amenities. Uh, so when we look at this, we see the roadway, the parking lot, and the sidewalk. We do asphalt repairs. And what that means is we do a lot of, uh, well, we started doing cutout and replacement of asphalt. Some of you can recall last year, we purchased a hot, hot patch wagon. We did that to extend the life of the infrastructure of the asphalt parking lots, roadways, and sidewalks. We also purchased our own crack filling machine, uh, again, to just improve our efficiencies and to also save the Conservation District some monies by doing most of these, uh, projects in-house, uh, up to our staff's capacity, of course. A few years ago, we also bought a striping machine. Again, we stripe our own parking lots, uh, once the, they've been laid out by the Planning and Development Department. We follow the manual and uniform traffic control devices as well as district standards. Uh, also what you see, um, in the foreground, uh, paver maintenance. Once those pavers are put in place, we continue to maintain those by replacing a chip, cracked, or missing pavers as well as then, um, putting back in and refilling the lacquer compound. One other item that you'll see in the parking lot area, uh, would be the signage. Once the signs are in place, we then, uh, after that one year, uh, once the site has been, uh, developed, we continue to maintain that, including the sign, uh, maintenance. Uh, again, we, uh, ended up creating our own, in our own program, um, by purchasing a compressor as well as, um, we purchase our own posts and anchors to set those, uh, signs. And there too, we follow the MUTCD, CDA, excuse me, um, standards as well as the district standards, uh, when it comes to sign repair and replacement. Also what you see are the park amenities. Uh, so what you see here again, uh, privies, shelters, miscellaneous amenities such as benches, picnic tables, display cases, hand pumps. All of those are maintained, uh, by the operations department. Uh, we also do minor roof repair on the privies, mortar repair, uh, door vent fixture repair and replacement as well as water sealing and wood sealing, again, to extend the life of, of those amenities. Moving on to landscaping, uh, so further on, what you see in the background, uh, ranger staff are responsible for the mowing and, uh, the maintenance of the landscape areas. Again, uh, those are set by the district and initially set by the Planning and Development Department. And then we follow those standards, whether it's mowing height, uh, what we trim, how we trim. Part of that, uh, landscape maintenance then is, uh, controlled burning, uh, around the non-landscape areas as well as selective herbicideing for, uh, native landscaped areas. Tree and shrub trimming and removal as well. Um, all of our staff, our ranger staff have gone through burn manager training and certification uh, for controlled burning, of course. And then also we have herbicide applicators and operators, as well as then for tree shrub trimming and removal. Uh, they're all chainsaw operator certified. Uh, next slide, please. What you're seeing here is a photo of LBBC, the entrance to it, of course. The Building Maintenance Department or branch consists of one supervisor and eventually three building maintenance workers. So with the visitor center, just what you see here. What we're maintaining, you're looking at roof repair, whether it's replacement of shingles. Ventilation, gutters, fascia, soffit. So when our building maintenance staff, let's say, would have to go up on the roof and let's say replace some missing shingles. They've already gone through a ten hour OSHA training and part of that OSHA training consists of. Fall arrest as well as scaffolding and ladder training. So not only are they getting up there and getting the job done, but they're doing it safely. All of our staff through operations have attended the ten hour training a number of times. Moving on, we also have the building maintenance responsible for siding and trim. We go and screen repair and replacement. They do the same for the doors, frames, lock sets. They also are we, excuse me, responsible for lighting and electrical. Flooring, tile, carpet and trim. They also with the HVAC, which is heating, ventilation, air conditioning. We have an inspection schedule, servicing and repairs of the furnaces, air conditioners and ventilation. Also, we inspect and maintain water and sewer that would include toilets, faucets, water, conditioning systems, holding tank septic fields. And then building inspections, which is really important. That's more of a proactive approach. We have monthly building inspections for the three of our main centers, LBBC, Prairie View and Brookdale. As well as our, I think we have eight shops and then our district residents. Those are done monthly as well as annually. That also includes fire alarm systems, fire suppression, security systems, elevators, boilers and the geothermal system at LBBC. Next slide, please. And last but not least, the fleet management branch. Again, two mechanics maintaining seventy two vehicles. Including all of our heavy equipment, mowers, snowmobiles, UTVs. They maintain all of them. They service and repair exhaust, tires and brakes, electrical drivetrain suspensions. They do some of the money, excuse me, minor bodywork. Also scheduled maintenance, again, like you would be taking your vehicle to the shop for oil filter, lubes, brakes and tires. As I mentioned, they also service and repair heavy equipment and trailers. Again, through OSHA training, they've been trained on lockout, tagout. We also service our small equipment such as chainsaws, trimmers and leak blowers. And again, another item, the key on being proactive is the replacement of our vehicles. And. How that rotation works, you know, we follow, we try to a ten year hundred fifty thousand mile guideline. Just as a general rule of thumb to replace vehicles, but there's much more involved than that. It's the condition of the vehicle, the age of the vehicle. Also, the projected cost of what it will take to maintain those vehicles. And we have all these programs in place and mechanics do. You know, to follow that and to extrapolate that out to see what that cost would be in the next one, three to five years. So we can then. Justify when it's time to replace a vehicle or a piece of equipment. So that's it. That's, I like to say, the tip of the iceberg. There's much more, but again, I just wanted to touch on some of the, excuse me. Some of the. Major items that we are responsible for with the operations department. And with that, I'll pass along to Chief King.
Thank you so much, Perry. So I'm also very excited to be here with you guys tonight to talk to you about our police department. You know, when I got here, there were a lot of questions about, you know, do we even need a police department at the Conservation District? And what are you doing? That that's different or special than what all the other police are doing in the county? And well, the short answer is quite a lot. Policing in open spaces is very, very different than policing in congested. Suburban areas, municipalities, and even some of the parts of the county with residential populations. It requires a different focus. In those environments, they are call driven, meaning that the police very often are going from one call to another call. And through that process, the the focus on community service, the focus on assisting other people. The focus on that kinder, gentler approach to policing is sometimes lost because they are focusing on emergency response and enforcement. And they're just busy going from one thing to the next. And so when they have some downtime. A lot of times they're trying to decompress and get ready for the next call. Well, that thankfully is not the environment we have, nor is it the environment that we ever want. Because when we have that environment in the world of policing, the. The focus on customer service and the ability for the police to help the people is greatly compromised. Sometimes because the police are, you know, just a byproduct of all the pressures that are on them. And sometimes, you know, as a direct result of all of the negative forces of the world. But we go through great lengths to protect our people from being in that situation. What we want from our police is instead of us for sitting around waiting for bad stuff to happen and then jumping into action and trying to. You know, catch the bad guy and do the enforcement piece. We go out there, we try to stop the bad stuff from happening. We look at our areas. We go, what are our threats? If a crime was going to occur, where is it most likely to occur? And then we use our data and and we use some strategic, you know, implementation strategies. To get us on a very proactive patrol routine. We leverage technology to make our small team have eyes and ears in in places where we can't always physically be. Those places that are at the greatest risk for the potential of crime being committed. And basically, we just take a very proactive report approach, kind of like what Perry was talking about with his maintenance. So how do we make this happen? Well, as we move on to the next slide, you will see that we make this happen. By letting officers understand what their job is. Their job is to help help people. You know, a lot of times in this day and age, in this world, in this environment, you know, you go to a police officer for help and they treat you like you're a burden. Like you're bothering them. Like, why are you coming to talk to me about this? This isn't a criminal matter. There's not a crime that's been committed. There's not a bad guy to be arrested. And so certainly, we have to address crime when it's committed. And we have to arrest bad guys, you know, when when they present on our site. But that's not the focus of our job. Our officers all understand that your primary focus is customer service. Their primary focus is is to provide what we call full service policing, which is more than just emergency response. It's more than just arresting bad guys. It's helping the good people. So all of our police officers know that they're going to be called upon to solve a myriad of problems and to help people in many, many different ways. From everything to persons who have unfortunately been victims of crimes. To people who've been injured in an accident that was no fault of their own. Last year, we even had Ryan Stewart, a couple had a very big eighty pound dog collapse on a trail quite far from the parking area. Ryan went out there, hiked out to the people, picked the dog up and carried it back to their car from there. This is not the type of behavior that you see from typical police population. And I am so proud to be leading this team. Because we're not only out there protecting the physical safety of people, but we're also out there protecting their psychological safety. And the psychological safety is the sense that when they are on their sites, that there are people available to help them. And we are called first responders because of our emergency response system here. In the county, we are the first person to be dispatched to that call. And what that means is we need to know how to help. We have to be willing to help. And we need to know the resources that are here in the county to help people. With a wide variety of things. Now, we are very proactive about safety issues because we want to make every visitor experience as pleasant. As possible. And in order to do this, it's not just us alone. We're working hand in hand with both planning and development and operations in order to make this happen. And can you move me to the next slide, please, Elizabeth? So basically, the question comes down to. How do we make our police different? In a world of police who are walking around or kind of grumpy, might have a chip on their shoulder and who. Have have taken upon themselves to complain about the way things are when they're called to go above and beyond. How do we create an environment where people are happy to go above and beyond, where they're not complaining about the extra work? Where they actually feel like that extra work is part of what makes their job important and special? And the answer is we focus on the individual. You know, I said this in my interview when I was hired for this position and I'm so happy and fortunate for this opportunity to have come. To me, but better people make better police officers. So what we've really done is, and better police officers make better police departments, right? So everybody wins when we focus on the individual. So what I've really done is try to find a way to keep my people happy. And a lot of that was reminding them the reason that they're such an important part of the district's mission. In engaging them in their employment experience and empowering them to use their special skill sets and their talents and their God given abilities. For not only the betterment of themselves in their career pursuit, but also for the betterment of the district. And when things are working like that, when things are in harmony together, where they can see where there's a benefit to them and there's a benefit to the district. And my goodness, this is what my job is. This doesn't even feel like work because I love being here and I love protecting these places. And I love this team of people. So by motivating them and helping them remember why they came here in the first place and what they used to love about their job. And showing them that those things still exist. We were able to make some magic happen. So for me, I just, you know, did a whole lot of listening. Set the framework, clarified expectations, identified some areas that needed improvement. And then basically, I got out of their way and let them do this job. Because the team that we have today and the team that that I walked into working with when I got here, this is an amazing group of people and they have so much to offer. And all of us are so important to be working with the district. Not only to make that visitor experience so enjoyable for our visitors today, but also to make sure that we're handing great, safe places. Down to future generations. Next slide. Because what we do today directly impacts the future. And that's what this is all really about. And the police department could never, ever, ever do this alone. You see, there's something that in the police world, we call crime prevention through environmental design. And that's really what Amy's doing. The planning and development of the sites, there's so much from a safety perspective that needs to be taken into consideration. To make sure that those places don't inadvertently create opportunities for crime. And so Amy does a fantastic job of bringing this vision together, not only protecting the environments and the plants, but also making sure that she's creating a space. That's going to help keep the people safe. And then there's something in police work that we refer to as the broken windows theory, which basically means if you don't take good care of yourself. And people see your stuff starting to fall in a state of disrepair, well, there are going to be opportunities for crime present. Because they see that you're not paying attention to the details. And that's the work that Perry's team does. To make sure that things are in a state of repair and they are maintained responsibly. And so that we don't have that sense that this is an opportunity, this is an environment where we can engage in criminal behavior. Because when things are buttoned up and they're kept tight and they're well maintained and well managed, people decide to look. Some for someplace else to commit their crimes because criminals are all about easy opportunity. They don't want to go to a place where they're going to get caught, where the police force is out there talking to the people, where the maintenance workers are seen on their rounds and taking good care of their property. Where the spaces are built and developed so that these opportunities for crime don't exist. So they simply go someplace else to engage in their nefarious needs. So our proactive policing is super important to keeping people safe while they're on our sites. But our job would be almost impossible if it weren't for the cooperation of the operations in the Planning and Development Committee. So all of us work together to protect our places and the people who visit them. To make sure that people create memories, that we have a great reputation of being a safe and enjoyable place for persons and families to visit. And so that we can hand these places over to the future generations so that they can continue to enjoy these places long after we're gone. And with that, I'm going to turn this back over to my wonderful boss, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks for the little plug there, too. Wanted to end on this image, try to sum it all up. All all three sides of this triangle are imperative to creating images like this. And this image is more about the memories that these people will will hold. Laura touched on that. If a site is designed well and and built to the right standards. Then it's easy to maintain. There's a lot of things about the maintenance. Perry only touched on just a brief few of them. In in those photographs he had up, there were a hundred items that have to be addressed. And to keep them in 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 good working order and in a good appearance, then as Laura pointed out, that makes. Her job and her staff's job easier because of the, what she called the broken window approach. So when we don't know what kind of day any of these people had that are in this image. But if they're a Conservation District site and they're doing that kind of thing, they're having a pretty good memory right there. They're they're. That's probably what they're going to remember about their activity is is how they felt at that last light of the day. And that is, you know, that's really what we're about. We're trying to bring, create these spaces that then allow people to retain these memories. Of us. So they'll come back and utilize us again. And having, one of the easiest way to keep a safe park is to have a lot of people using it. And that's really our target and our goal. Well-designed, well-maintained and provide them a sense of security. That's really what we're about. With that being said, I'll close the presentation and turn it back to you, Elizabeth and President Henning. And open it up to questions. We will give a shot at answering.
Wonderful. Excellent job. Very well done, Don and team. Anybody have any questions for our operations, Amy and someone safety group?
All right, questions? They have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you to John, Amy, Perry and Laura for your presentation tonight. It was wonderfully done and and. Certainly enlightens all of us as to all the work that goes into this. And and I have to tell you that. Since I've been on this board, I've been on more Conservation District sites than I had been previous forty five years of my, that you've been around and. You do an excellent job of maintaining everything, designing, feel you feel safe everywhere you go. I think the goals are well met. That you've set and in your teams do excellent work. And I've never seen anybody having a bad day at the Conservation District when I'm out and about. Everybody's having a good time and everybody's enjoying whatever it is they're doing. And it comes down to all the work that all of you do. So thank you very much. Pass that on to everyone and it's in your employ because it's.
We we certainly will. And thank you, folks, for your time.
Okay, that will move on to trustees report. Anybody have anything to report at this time? Funny word liaison is Kelly with us? I have a screen. Kelly?
Can you hear me now?
We can now.
Okay. Sorry about that. First of all, I want to say I really enjoyed all these presentations over the past few months. Learning more about how the different departments in the Conservation District work. So thank you for all the employees who are putting those together. I really did enjoy it and I learned a lot. So for my report, first, as you know, Lynn joined the county board. And as sorry as I am to take her away from you all, I'm very excited that she's on. And as sorry as I am to take her away from you all, I'm very excited that she's on the county board. Um, she's going to be a great asset. You guys trained her well. So um, thank you for um, allowing her gracefully to exit there and. And come to the county board. She ascended her first meeting today at lawn government and I was on that committee. I'm on that committee. So that was. It was enjoyable to sit next to her. Um, things that are going on in the county, we are approving more um. American Rescue Plan at grants every month and they go through finance first and they get vetted there. I mean, they go through many other. A process before that, but the first place they go for the county board is finance. And last month we have through had three, which we approved two of them. We have more every month. And I, if you guys are interested in learning how this is working and what type of um. Applications and applicants and questions we ask too, I would really advise you to go watch the last part of the finance meeting. On the county board. Uh, we do have some really great programs and uh, organizations out there that are asking um, for these grants. So um, those are, you can go to the um, county board meeting portal and see where they are. Everything's recorded so you could go. Go watch it at your leisure. Um, today in lawn government, we passed a resolution for body cams. So they will be purchasing them after it's approved on the county board. It's a five-year lease agreement. And um, they tested many different kinds and instead of purchasing them, they leased them because we all know that they're going to be out of date. Pretty much in a year or so after they purchased them and this just has so many different um. Different. Things they can use them for, how, what sets them off, how, when they record. So they seem to be pretty top of the line and I'm really excited that they're they're doing this and I think the officers are too. I, you know, and originally, originally there was some resistance, but I think they're, they're excited to use them now. Um, they are the type that coordinate with the car. So if the car um, dash cams running. And then the police officer steps out of the car, then their um. Their body cam will start working too. And it also starts in different things. If they put their hand on their weapon or take their taser out, the body cam automatically starts. So um, I, I'm really, I'm thrilled that this is starting and um. By the end of the year, even before that, they will have it all as long, as soon as it gets shipped. Um, we appointed last, well, it's this month, uh, nine people to the regional planning commission. And Tom Bernie will be the um, committee chair of the regional planning commission. We also just last week adopted the Fox River Corridor Plan, which I know you guys had a lot of input on, so that is adopted. And then just something that I want to make you guys aware of, um, Holiday Hills, which borders on the Fox River. They are currently have sewers and they've had sewers forever. I'm sorry, septic. They've had septic. And I don't know how much you know this, but the Fox River floods frequently there every year. My, my husband actually grew up there and remembers canoeing to the back of the neighborhood. And so now they're putting and they want to put in a sewer system and they've been, they have, they're working with Northern Moraine. Reclamation District. And um, looking for grants, but when the Fox River floods. It gets into the septic and then eventually the septics may overflow and then whatever's in there will go back into the Fox River. So it it's really not a clean situation at some points. So they're looking for grants and I know they've are working with the um, Illinois EPA and um, I've directed toward a couple of other things, but if anybody has. Any ideas of any other grants and a way to help them pay for their sewers. Um, obviously with the pandemic, the price has gone up, you know. A third, so just want to throw that out there and um. That's really all I have. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to my report. I, I did attend the Farm Bureau building or meeting. Last month and uh, Elizabeth, Brenna and Brad did an excellent job of meeting with the Farm Bureau and I think they were.
Yeah, we indeed or bombarded with trustees and pre-staffs.
Yeah, it went well. So anyway, I enjoyed that and uh, so thank you to the Elizabeth and staff there. Um, that all went up to public comments. One is Stephanie, is that who's monitoring this tonight? Stephanie, do you have anybody out there?
There, there are no comments.
Okay, thank you. Let we move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? If not, I wonder if you get to read the whole thing. It's a motion.
Um, okay, I make a motion to. Prove the consent agenda as follows, twelve point one, with four minutes of previous meetings. Twelve point one A, January thirteen, twenty twenty-one, right there maybe. Twelve point one B, December sixteen, twenty twenty-one, executive session, committee of the whole. Twelve point two, acceptance of the treasures report, twelve point two A, one. Thirty-one, twenty, twenty-two. Twelve point two B, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, general unbudget variance report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, quarter three. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty-two dash oh seven, a resolution authorizing. The destruction of listed verbatim requirements of executive meetings between January first, twenty twenty. And twelve point four, resolution number twenty dash oh eight, a resolution. Authorizing the release of listed executive sessions to the public domain compliance with the open meeting. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty-two dash oh nine, a resolution authorizing the executive director. To execute a twelve-month professional services. Agreement beginning April first, twenty twenty-two and ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, with concern to integration. LLC of Priscill Lake, Illinois, for IT and computer support services. Twelve point six, resolution number twenty-two dash ten, a resolution authorizing the executive director. To execute the five-months of resident. Residence lease license agreements as presented for the term. Of April first, twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Twelve point seven, resolution number twenty-two dash eleven, a resolution authorizing the executive director. Directed to grant agreement number twenty-one dash oh two with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Illinois Snowmobile Fund in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for trail. Twelve point eight, authorization to prepare specifications and leits for the hiring of contractors to treat invasive. Species at six high priority restoration projects in number zero two two two. Dot oh eight dot oh one, twelve point nine. Um, authorization to prepare specifications and leits for purchase of two replacement forestry mulchers for natural areas management work. County wide bid number oh two 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 dot oh eight dot oh two, twelve point ten. Authorization to prepare specification leits for purchase of one replacement ski loader for it. With a forestry package for natural use. Natural areas management work, county wide, in number zero two two two. That oh eight, that oh three, twelve eleven, electric go and natural gas management. Twelve point one, twelve point eleven A, resolution number twenty-two. Dash twelve, resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the independent placement of electric. And natural gas management consulting services, district-wide with Midwest Energy Department of Rich Illinois. Twelve point eleven B. Authorize authorization to split bids for electrical service for fifteen district locations for one year beginning November first, twenty twenty-two. To October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, bid number oh two 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 dot one five dot oh. One, twelve point twelve, resolution number twenty-two dash thirteen, the resolution approving the. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, second salary schedules as presented. Twelve point thirteen, resolution number twenty-two dash fourteen, the resolution approving job descriptions and title changes to the following positions for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. IT specialist, grade fifteen. Dash schedule A to IT systems administrator, grade seventeen, dash schedule A. Accounting supervisor, grade twenty, dash schedule A. To accounting manager, grade twenty. Next schedule A and social media specialist, grade sixteen, schedule A to marketing manager, grade nineteen, schedule A. Effect April first, twenty twenty-two. Twelve point fourteen, authorization to prepare and solicit requested. Request for proposals to study erosion control options at Lions Prairie, nature preserve Fox River. RFP number oh two 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 dot oh eight dot oh one, twelve points. Fifteen authorization. Reauthorization to, I'm sorry. Twelve point fifteen, reauthorization to prepare specifications and le-. Let bids for the demolition of buildings at Glacial Park Conservation Area, bid number ten twenty-one dot oh nine dot oh one. RA. Twelve point sixteen, authorization to prepare and solicit requests for proposals for the. The most building feasibility study, RFP number. Zero two 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 dot oh nine dot oh one.
Thank you. That was a long one this evening. All right, is there a second? Chris has a second. A roll call please.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Gaden?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas? Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, for that, we'll move on to other board business, approval of bills payable for the month of January two thousand twenty-two. Treasuries, treasures internal audit, uh, I know Lynn has pulled a few bills.
Eight, eight, two, six, eight, for thirty-eight ninety-five, a hardware. I eight, four, seven, seven, fifty dollars for Illinois B. Six, four, six, nine, three hundred. Three. Hundred and forty dollars and eighty-five cents or minerals.
Anything else, Pauline? Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Linda, and then I'll turn it over to Treasurer Fritz to introduce the rest of this.
Okay, thirteen point one B, need a motion to consider. To approve the payment of cancer bypass indicated on submission of bills pending report for the period ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
For a second. It says a second, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Thomas? Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes. Yes.
I will abstain. Some motion carries five, yay, and one extension. Yep, thirteen point one C, consideration of approval. Prove the payment of the balance of bills as indicated in submission of bills pending report for the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll, I'll do Bill this time since I hear him and Ray, I'll give you on the next one. So Bill has a second. On a roll call.
Trustee Gaden?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Don?
Yes. Yes, motion carries unanimously, uh, brings us to. The next motion.
Thirteen point two, consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash ten fifteen. An ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, final combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance.
Hey, would you like them to second that? Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Thomas? Yes.
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 Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Hey, uh, do you want to give us a lowdown on where that goes next for this, probably what's happening?
I sure can. So I will package that all up with correspondence to the chairman. Uh, Michael for tomorrow, um, and Megan will loop her parts to getting it filed in newspaper and and certified. Uh, it crosses over and will be in front of finance and audit in early March. I believe I sent some dates out already and I'll just reinforce that with everybody. Uh, this week, so you have it on your calendar. Once it comes out of finance and audit, it'll cross over to committee of the whole. And then onto the county board for acceptance. And so uh, it's well on its way. Um, and there's been no additional comments. So Kelly, we'll be looking forward to your assistance uh, in helping us cross over.
You got it.
Great, thank you. Then we'll move on to executive director's report.
Okay, so legislative update, uh, just, uh, obviously things are very busy in Springfield. Um, with many bills uh, coming out of committee, uh, the deadlines have passed for it to get out of its first chamber where it was introduced. And they're in a compressed schedule because of trying to get out early so they can get back in districts for campaign season. So Senate Committee deadline was February tenth. And then House Committee was actually last Friday on the eighteenth. And uh, the, once they're on the floor, they have, the Senate has to February twenty-fifth to get it off, uh, out of the Senate to move over to the next chamber. And the House has on uh, March fourth. So there's a lot of work going down. We have slipped on various bills. That have come in proponents on certain areas. Um, several of the IEPD bills that they introduced on behalf of park districts, conservation districts and forest preserve districts. Are doing well and they're out of the committee and they're on the floor and they're passing. One of them, uh, just to mention was House Bill forty-three, forty-eight. Which was eligibility to apply for law enforcement camera brand, camera grants. Um, prior to that language, uh, park districts, forests or districts and conservation districts were not allowed to apply for those grants, but obviously. Disciplines language in there, so then we'd be able to uh, be able to competitively apply for that. Um, there were some other areas on nutrient loss reduction and then DNR. Uh, to abolish the advisory board and so that DNR can handle um, issues that came onto them. So. Very various things happening, but it's a very busy time. Uh, parks day down there is March eighth and ninth. And again, I still, if anybody is interested, the reception is on the evening of March eighth. I'll be heading down there and then the workshop. Uh, is the following day on March ninth. There is also then, and I believe Vice President Cook is going to join, uh, anybody else that's interested. There is a virtual. Uh, legislative day that's being held on February twenty-eighth at the end of the month and our legislators will be. Having discussions with them through Zoom. So that's one's a little bit more easier to get to. Uh, if you're interested in attending, let me know and we'll make sure you get signed up for that. And then as far as other items, uh, we will be at the front of the committee tomorrow in transportation to talk about FAP four twenty. So at Collins, Al Siler and myself will be presenting. Um, well, I should say Ed should be doing presenting on his backup band here. But he will be presenting to uh, hopefully get the support of the finance, of the transportation committee and the county board. To approach IDNR to have that area within Glacial Park vacated. Um, the pack has an event tomorrow night at the Bill Mansion and then Conservation Congress, mark your calendars. Uh, thank you, President Penny. And uh. Former trustee emeritus, uh, Carolyn Campbell did sit on the planning committee uh, that we had and April sixth, it'll be in the evening. And we are looking for a great program. The theme uh, for the event is being called. Um, thriving in a transforming world and invitations, save the dates are or have gone out or will be going out. Through our marketing, communication and education team. Uh, our keynote session uh, for the evening, we've been able to obtain. Hi, Israel, who's the managing director of research and global strategist and head of global thematic research of Bank of America at Vera Lynch. On the East Coast and will be joining us to provide a global view. And then we will be doing our second session for the evening will be called A Place Called Home. And our moderator for the panel discussion will be Jamie Potts, who is the executive director of the Civic Infrastructure Collaborative. And we are working on our panelists who will be locally to present a focus here in McHenry County on areas of health and wellness, ecotourism. Social change and uh, just a lot of great conversations that will take place. So um, we'll be getting more information out to you on that. And then also Festival of Trigger Maples, um, please be sure to save the dates, wrap on by and that opens early March. Uh, March fifth and sixth and then March eleventh and twelfth.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Many assignment reports. Okay, so we've got a few opens now. Lynn was very busy, so um. We get to Fox River Ecosystem Partnership. Uh, is anybody, anybody that's interested in any of these, just let me know and we'll. We don't have anybody there. Uh, do you have any update? Do you have anybody on staff that hasn't updated on that?
Um, not that I am aware of. We'll monitor and so if we cannot have a trustee, we'll find out if we have a staff member that can pop in every once in a while.
Great. Has anything happened with Tishwaki?
No, we meet next Friday. But the state order for the Save the Blue Bowl period is on March first. So, I guess we'll find out what happens with that, with the construction for that, fact for the report.
Are they, you know, once they're asking for, let me?
I know they were looking into an extension or some kind of sort of resolution really would be optimal to figure out a path forward. So, it's not bogging anyone down on both sides. But I don't know that that's happened.
Right. We finished our annual report. And so, if you have not received a link, you can send that out. That just leave a nice review of all the exciting things that occurred last year. There continues to be Jedi training with Pink City Conservation. And those workshops will continue, available to all of our member organizations and their webinar-type format. And those have been well received. In addition, the, I'll send the link out, the hub, which is now called, being hosted by the Hill Museum and CMAP with that working team is GIS database. And it's very interactive. A lot of data, the region that you can put in different layers and that kind of state of the art. And so, that means something very interesting. It's going to be showing all the work of areas, protected areas that are, you know, with, with green infrastructure to agricultural lands and all of the things that we can happen with our goals of being mapped out and is available through the web. So, I'll send that to the board. I might find that very interesting to take a look at and kind of see what's going on with that. And then our next meeting of the council will be in April.
Terry, honey, Farm Bureau. Matt on the ninth and John kind of stole my third.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. But it was, it was good dialogue. There's, there was, I don't know, a couple of people that really had a lot of questions. And I guess they're going to, Dan Ziller wants to meet again. You know, it was, it was good. I mean, there's definitely what's going on and there's always some questions. Then on the fifteenth, I attended a governmental affairs conference in Springfield. And that was really good. There's a, then that night, there was a reception with our legislators. One of the big things was about financial interest. There's a new bill monitor wants to be introduced. And they're kind of not primed in the, like you, what you do and how much you make. But that's really not the case because they were worried that like all the township people and people on boards that they don't want to develop into what your, your financial stuff is. So, you kind of got a good explanation on that. The other thing, one other thing I attended there was about solar, wind power, and then transmission lines.
All right, Elizabeth, you're up next.
The Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Reserve Districts did meet at the state conference. We are looking at funding a trails impact study that would be regional, which would be helpful to all of the organizations when they're applying for grants. So, we're trying to figure out how to scope that. It's a big project. Just an announcement for IEPD, they do offer a variety of boardmanship programs and activities again that you may want to, and I'll send that out too to take advantage of. There are some webinars, et cetera, just available to everybody. And they've got that leadership program. And then, of course, park stay. And then the next meeting of the Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Reserve Districts will probably be late spring.
Foundation.
Nothing. They did not have a meeting. They will have one March.
March fourteenth.
March fourteenth. I cannot attend as they needed to change their date because of park stay. So, maybe you want to go.
I'm hoping so. I gotta check my calendar.
Okay.
We have no one, anyone go to the fog?
Tomorrow night.
Where's, where's that?
At the Doyle Mansion. But we did meet, actually, the managers, those managers, we met actually today. We meet as well. Either every other month or so, we get together and we were talking about another collaborative initiative with Shaylan, who has been doing that shared resource study. And we've been looking at how we could use GIS across the different units of government. So, that is currently being explored.
And Green Brinks, anyone attend that?
That's coming up the first Wednesday in March. So, I don't know.
And John Kramer, you, you have any meeting?
Yes, that Active Communities Working Group did meet twice since we last met. Two items to report. One is the bike and pedestrian plan is moving forward. It's actually scheduled to be released in a final draft form in the middle of March. So, that, a lot of work has gone into it. So, we should be getting a look at it then. The second item is, some of the trustees may remember, it was a couple, three years ago, the Conservation District partnered with Cycling Without Age. That's the, the group that, it was, it was a new group in McHenry County. They basically provide rides, bicycle rides for persons with disabilities and, and persons who can no longer ride a bike, older individuals. It's a tri-shaw concept. Some of you may remember. Well, they are growing gangbusters. They have when they started, they had one bike and were looking for a trailer. They now have two trailers and three bikes. And, and they're busy. I mean, in the, in the summer, they're busy all the time. Their president reached out to me, I believe it was October, and said, is there anything the Conservation District, any way to partner with a Conservation District? And so, I put him, Greg Glover is his name, in touch with our education services manager, Becky Lambert. And I don't know if you've, if you flip through landscapes, you'll see probably about page ten or twelve, something like that. You'll see a picture of it. They've actually put a partnership together where they're doing some of these rides on district sites and in cooperation and conjunction with us. So, it's a, it's a growing movement. And it's, it was a very exciting report to hear. They're looking forward to this year and they are looking for volunteers. So, if anybody's interested, I can get you in touch with them.
Thank you. Actually, McHenry County.
We have our brand launch event on March third at the Doyle Mansion. It's a popular place. There are a lot of events are taking place there. And Director Plau and Director Kummer should be joining you for that events to meet with other partners.
You want to have any other outreach contacts? Anything else? Okay, with that, I'll go to public comments too.
There's still none.
Hold on. All right. Well, there's only one thing left to do then. Yeah, if you'd like to do that. Chris moves adjourners or a second. Linda's seconds. Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you to everyone. Good evening.
Thank you.
For all your input. Be safe out there on the ice tonight.